All right, it is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate via Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Here.
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 All right, we do have a revised agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion to accept the revised regular meeting agenda.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the revised November 15th, 2023 agenda as printed.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Davis.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Wiltinghouse.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, next on our agenda would be public hearings, but we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we will move into our special presentations. We do have three special presentations tonight. Our first is proclamation recognizing Shop Small Saturday, which will be observed on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 25th. This initiative is intended to encourage support for small businesses during one of the most popular shopping periods of the year. The city of Mission is fortunate to have a variety of small, independently owned businesses spread throughout our shopping district, including snowboards, specialty roast coffee beans, craft beers, home decor, unique apparel, homemade jewelry, and so much more. We hope that as you're looking for that special gift or delicious treat for your holiday table, that you remember these businesses and their owners who work hard not only during the holiday season, but all year to provide products and services that are as unique and special as their Mission customers. Shop small and spend your dollars in Mission on November 25th, and of course, every day of the year. Our second special presentation tonight is an update from Lynn Crane about the work of Smiling Hearts in the city of Mission. Lynn, come on up.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this evening. I am Lynn Crane. I am the Chairman of the Board of Directors of Smiling Hearts Incorporated. Smiling Hearts that I'm going to talk about tonight, it's an organization that not many are familiar with. We've been in business for since 2000.
Next one, is it the next one?
Yes. There we go. We'll, we'll, we'll get this. We were incorporated as a 501(c)(3), next please. 501(c)(3) community service organization with a focus on food distribution to support the less fortunate individuals. Long-term Mission resident, former council member, former city clerk. Sorry, I'm Susie Gibbs was the individual that kind of led the path toward the formation of our organization. She was involved with the Mission Holiday Family Adoption Program from the very inception and for years managed the program. Her dream was to use the concept of that program and extend it to some mobile distributions of food and a local food pantry to increase the support that we could provide to the individuals that needed food assistance. Essentially, her concept, her goal was to put the food on the plate and the smile on the face of families for more than one or two times a year. So that was the impetus for us forming the foundation. It involved organizing, coordinating, and supporting the newly desired programs, the mobile distributions, the food pantry and support and coordination with the city's holiday program. As a part of that, our organization had to form partnerships with the city of Mission, with the Harvesters Community Food Network, and with the Trinity Lutheran Church in Mission. Smiling Hearts is entirely volunteer. We have a Board of Directors, seven individuals, please. Next, please. There we go. All of which have a history of strong involvement with community activities. We have key roles in organizing the Mission Community Food Pantry and in running the or managing the mobile distribution at Shawnee Mission North High School. We also are in partnership with the city of Mission for the adopted families program. Next. Next, please. Harvesters Mobile Distributions are held at Shawnee Mission North High School, the east parking lot. We had our first event in 2019, I believe it was April. And since then, we have held 18 separate food distribution events. We have given away just short of 236,000 pounds of food donated without charge by Harvesters. From 20 through 23, we have served around 1,800 families, comprising about 7,500 individuals. Mission Community Food Pantry is held at Trinity Lutheran Church here in Mission, Kansas. It is a drive-through. We have on the second and fourth Thursdays of every month except September, except November and December. And on those, it's the second and the third Thursday so that we don't coincide with holidays. We are open from four to six in the afternoon. On October the 26th last month was the three-year anniversary of the food pantry. During those three years, we have provided food to in excess of 8,000 families, over 30,000 individuals. That's a big number. Let me put it in perspective. That's more than three times the population of the city of Mission that we've provided food for in three years. And we've grown from an average of about 60 families per event to over 160 families per event. And that is roughly 250% increase over the course of three years in the service that we provide. During that, we've distributed 175,000 pounds of food from Harvesters and equivalent amount from Hy-Vee that we purchase from the local Hy-Vee. A couple of observations, three observations I'd like to make that we've seen first. Excuse me, there is a continuing need for the type of support we provide. With the 250% increase over three years in what we're getting, it's apparent that there's need out there. We don't track where people come from, but we see license plates from Johnson County all the time, so we're in our neighborhood also. We also tracked new visitors, first time people that come through and we're getting roughly 12% each session, 12% that come that haven't been there before. That means, of course, that we're losing some. Unfortunately, some of it's through death of the older generation, some of it is just different places. Next observation I'd make is volunteerism in this area is incredible. We don't want for volunteers. They come to see us, they ask if they can help. We have when we were running the mobile food distributions at Shawnee Mission North, with starting times around eight or nine o'clock, you know, and volunteers showing up around eight, we'd have 50 to 60 individuals showing up, which was incredible. No other event does that. When we changed the time to around seven with the volunteers showing up at six in the morning on Saturday, we were still getting 20 to 25 individuals, enough for to run a double line through our food tables. It's a tremendous value to have a strong volunteer base. You can do just about anything in community service with that. We have that. Next, please. This, I think, is the most important thing and I want to focus on a little bit. I think the city of Mission has an attitude toward community service that's pretty rare among city governments. I've not seen it in many others around here at least. And leadership from the top is very important. We've met time or two with the mayor and former mayors with the city administrator to talk through things, to sort things out. We've always been well received and well supported. The departments. That also is incredible support that we get. For starters, there is not a department in the city that doesn't have more than two or three individuals that volunteer their time to help with our events also. Not when they're on city time, when they're off, they come, they help. The, let me back up a little bit if I can. Departments. The police department has helped us immensely. We have difficulty sometimes in small spaces figuring out how to manage more cars than what we feel we can manage. And so the police department have come out and given us insight on how to manage traffic coming through the events. The third event we had, we had traffic coming out of the parking lot down the side street and backed up onto Noll Avenue. Since then, we've had one time when we had two cars that didn't make it into the parking lot. Thank you, I appreciate that, Dan. Parks and Recreation, they provide tables, other supplies, they help, they have facilities. Penn and that group, they're just wonderful, easy to work with and whatever we need, they try to fill it. And I really want to take my hat off to Public Works. When we have mobile distributions, the high school that started, you know, seven in the morning and we start prepping for it at six in the morning, it's always dark. They show up at six o'clock or earlier. Smile on their faces, setting up tables, putting out cones, putting up barricades, moving trash cans around, they stay until it's over, they pick up everything, pack it away, take it down. And I've never seen a complaint, I've never seen anything except a smile. Their our support from the city at all levels has been remarkable and we could not have done it without what the city has done for us. If I could, please. And so finally, our swan song. Yes. Any organization that sets their goals and then incorporates to meet their goals and then hangs on after their goals are met is wasting time for everyone involved. And we've met our goals. Suzie's dream goal of feeding families and putting a smile on their faces more than once or twice, we've done that now 30 times a year. Our food pantry is incredible. We have a management team that's just top-notch. They're already have talked to the city and the process of expanding the capability for the food, particularly refrigerated and frozen food. We have one of the best pantry managers available. He's, man's incredible. It is a well-run organization. It's currently finishing up a what, a one-year plan and it's off onto a five-year planning event and they're looking at expanding the days that they work as well as the number of events that we have. So we've met that and more than half of our Board of Directors has been intimately involved with the city's holiday program. A lot of them, if not most of them, since the inception of the program. Our going away will not affect anything in terms of the involvement we've had in partnership with the city. It's just it won't be official now. We're still going to be doing the same things that we did before. So what's the point in us being around? In September, our meeting, the Board of Directors unanimously decided to dissolve the organization since we've met our goals and we really we're going to continue as individuals on the path we've chosen. So that's a quick summary of the organization. I appreciate the time you've taken to listen to my discussion. More than that, I appreciate the city and what they've done that we couldn't do without the city. And I sincerely hope that every one of you is proud of your city, because I sure as heck am. Thank you very much.
I, I might just add, I think Mr. Crane left out the fact in, in our last conversation that I believe there have been folks that have stepped up to take over mobile distribution.
I'm sorry.
Their plans for people to take, take over the mobile distribution and the food pantry will continue, so we're not losing anything as a result of the dissolution of, of Smiling Hearts. Because of that foundation that I think you've built, others have been willing to step up and
That is correct. The, we visited with our contact with Harvesters and they had three of their partner agencies that wanted to take the time and the slot that we had used. They will not make a commitment or select any given agency until after the first of the year because their fiscal year is when the contract with the new agency has to start. We won't know the exact location yet, but I've been assured that it's within our general area. If anyone's interested, I have some maps that show the distribution of the agencies in the area around here, which are very interesting. Okay.
Lynn, can you maybe also ask, I see several of your board members here tonight. Can you just ask that they stand so we can recognize everyone else as well? I see John and Mark and Kathy and so, you know, thank you to Lynn and your whole team for your service to Mission.
Thank you.
All right, our final special presentation tonight is a proclamation recognizing World Pancreatic Day. Pancreatic cancer is the third leading cause of cancer-related deaths in the United States and has the lowest five-year survival rate of all major cancers. The good health and well-being of Mission residents are enhanced by increased awareness about the symptoms, risks, and research leading to early detection, causes and effective treatment. And so I encourage everyone to join me in declaring the month of November as Pancreatic Awareness Month and November 16th, 2023 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Mission. Next, we would move on to the issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds are on our agenda this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has eight items tonight. Our city council committees met on November 1st and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed. Items 4A through 4H.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Thomas, yes. Wiltinghouse.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ryer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next we'll move to public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Robin, do we have any comments online? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we will move into our action items tonight. We do have one item coming forward from the Planning Commission for consideration of a preliminary development plan for Phase Two of Mohawk Park at 6649 Lamar. Ms. Neller, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is case 23-21, the preliminary development plan of Phase Two of Mohawk Park. As you mentioned, this is at 6649 Lamar. The first phase of Mohawk Park improvements were completed in August of 23. Those included amenities such as bathrooms, covered pavilion, parking lot and landscaping. This project proposal this time will realign the current walking trail and provide a 10-foot trail loop around and throughout the site. Also new playground equipment to the east of the playground or of the pavilion and restrooms, a combination of a half-court basketball and pickleball sport court and a chain link fence around the sport court as well that will be black vinyl. The existing playground will be removed and proposed playground will be designed with universal design features. ADA features will also be incorporated as in a crow's nest play area, swing and accessible ramp that are included in this proposal as well, along with sensory equipment and for universal inclusivity. Let's see, features throughout the playground provide intermittent shade. Existing parking and drive loop on the northeast corner will be replaced with landscaping and open space with two 12, or sorry, 12 new proposed parallel on-street parking spaces on Horton with ADA standard sidewalk ramps included. Landscape will also be native to northeast Kansas. That's also included with proposal. The plan does conform with Conference of Plan and the Parks and Master Plan. There were eight conditions that were associated with this that were approved or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission as well. I can go through those if you have any questions about that. What I really wanted to focus on was the comments from the public. We had some residents that were concerned with the noise of pickleball. I cited a couple articles from New York. From the New York Times. Please don't make me. Okay, so New York Times article and an NPR article were included in one of the comments regarding noise, talking about the decibels of pickleball being similar to backup beepers on garbage trucks, for instance. But we also had folks that stood up and were very excited about pickleball, that were excited about the opportunity there that pickleball would provide for that section of Mission in the, in that neighborhood. Also excited about the chain link fence that will be gone, but you know, we also had some opposition to that to, for some safety concerns as well. But overall, people were very happy with seeing that chain link fence gone that was on the south and east side. I believe it's still existing now, but that will be removed. Let's see, especially for the soccer fields, I think they were concerned about safety there, but I think we addressed some of those concerns in that meeting with saying, you know, usually the soccer fields are meant for smaller children that aren't kicking the ball that far and that hard to, you know, worry about those safety features necessarily. Traffic was another consideration and concern. Some people in the public and in the Planning Commission requested that a, a, a speed bump be installed on Horton. We reiterated to the public and to Planning Commission members that with this proposal, that's not necessarily a time that that would be just, you know, considered. But Public Works may, you know, determine that that's something to consider at a later time if that does become an issue with traffic or speed on Horton. Lights have also been a consideration and I think Penn has been working with with the architecture group to address some of the light issues from the pavilion specifically shining into the neighborhood to the south and he's still working with them to discover ways to kind of mitigate that issue. And then you know, some people wanted the lights to stay on a little bit later at night or during Memorial Day, Labor Day weekends when it's not quite as the, for kids that come home during Memorial Day and Labor Day for, when it's gets dark earlier rather than later in the summer. So I think that was just about all the comments that people had. Oh, one other thing was the pickleball and basketball court combination, the orientation of the basketball and pickleball. And I think that Penn was considering working with the architecture firm to redesign that possibly or to at least consider that redesign. Dust control during construction was a comment from a planning commissioner. And I think that was about all we had. One, oh, one other issue that was also incorporated that will be in the final development plan is plantings for noise considerations around the pickleball, the sport court to mitigate some of the sound. And those are, I believe, arborita bushes that grow quite tall to help with some of the noise mitigation. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Yep, please come forward and state your name and city of residence.
Hello, my name is Jean Patterson. I live at 6107 West 67th Street. And my comments are about the pickleball court. The initial planning for the park was made in the early popularity of pickleball. And we now know how disruptive the noise is when courts are embedded in residential neighborhoods, prompting noise complaints, police calls, even lawsuits. The specific frequency and erratic timing of pickleball make it particularly annoying. The proposed location is 200 feet from the nearest home. The most often quoted engineer on pickleball noise and a player himself says it can, it can in a wide open space be heard almost 900 feet away, but that there are rarely complaints from people living more than 500 feet away. Again, the closer to homes are 200 feet away. Other Johnson County cities are now struggling with this very issue. In fact, Prairie Village has issues at both Windsor and Meadowbrook Park. You can avoid having to deal with these issues and the cost of remediating measures in the future by simply not marking for pickleball. Pickleball players have other options. Homeowners do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from members of the public? Seeing none, we'll now open the floor for council discussion. Any council comments or questions? See, oh, yeah, Debbie? Do you have a comment or question?
On the council update, is that what we're doing?
Uh, no, we're still on the Mohawk. Yeah, no problem. Okay, seeing, yeah, Hillary?
Just a quick question on the pickleball courts. I know we've got the chain link fence around them, the black vinyl. Does it also have the similar fabric weaving that, or will it have the similar fabric weaving similarly to tennis courts? Where, do you know what I'm saying?
The fabric screen that's, that's there.
Yeah, I imagine that would be an added barrier for sound as well, may, even if it's minimal.
Yeah, we could definitely add that. At this point, it's a, a four-foot high fence, so wouldn't eliminate too much of the sound, but every little bit helps.
A four-foot high fence around the pickleball court?
Correct. Pickleball and basketball court.
This is also for basketball, yeah.
Okay.
And Penn, I guess I did have a question along those lines. If it did turn out that pickleball was a problem, we, we would still have it as a basketball court, so it wouldn't be like a, an amenity that was an unnecessary spend or anything like that, right?
Correct, yeah. And right now, I mean, with the soccer groups there, they've also considered using that as a footsall court. And right now, I mean, with the soccer groups there, they've also considered using that as a footsall court. Because it's a hard court surface and, you know, little kids, it teaches them soft trapping skills. Yeah, there's plenty of, plenty of uses for.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, just one other comment. I know we're just looking at the plan right now and there's a lot of parts to, you know, still to come. But when we get to those parts, if we could just get a little bit more info on plans for, you know, hours of operation and making sure we're really doing best practices so we can do as much for the neighbors as possible, you know, as, as the plans progress. Because we're still a ways out.
You bet, absolutely. And one of the important considerations, I believe, is whether or not it's a permanent pickleball court versus a multi-purpose court. Because the moment you put permanent nets in, that invites the entire, you know, body of pickleball players. Those who are recreational as well as those who are playing in round robin leagues. Right now, we haven't had any negative comments at our Anderson Court pickleball linings. And so they could be in part due because there's not a permanent net there on site. And so you either have to bring your own or check one out from the community center. Those are important considerations.
And it would be a single court, so it's also not going to invite tournaments or that sort of thing, right?
Well, right now, it's, it'll be lined for two.
Or two, sorry, yeah.
Two courts still not permanently set up for, for pickleball nets, you know.
Yeah, Leah?
I just kind of had a question kind of surrounding Anderson Park, which has both tennis and pickleball capabilities. Are, are there any complaints from neighbors there?
No, and, and the closest neighbor is fifty feet away, so you would think that there'd be an immediate impact from them.
Is pickleball noisier than tennis?
It is noisier. Yep, there's no doubt the, because the, most paddles have a plastic element to them. And the wiffle ball is essentially just plastic, so it's plastic on plastic. And, yeah, if, if it's, if it's set up like other cities set it up, the necks go a little bit higher. And so it kind of begins to echo off of different elements within the park.
So it's not the people that are making the noise, it's the actual game itself?
Correct. It's the ball hitting the paddle. And then the more, obviously the more courts, the more, you know, opportunities for that to echo.
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I didn't, didn't quite know what to make of the noise issue at first, but I read some of the articles and, and was it, I guess surprised at, at just how actually irritating it can be in some neighborhoods. You know, suffice it to say, I was convinced from reading some of the articles that it, it can be a real problem. I, you know, I just, I, I wonder, Carrie mentioned maybe some plantings to help mitigate some of the sound, but I would like to see us make efforts on that and, as you've said, monitor this really closely. I don't really feel that it warrants going back to the planning commission per se, since, since we, I think, can handle a lot of this administratively as necessary, but I definitely don't want this to become a problem for folks that live close by. It, it sounds like it has been genuinely a drag on people's lives to have some of these things nearby sometimes.
I, I think, I think just to reiterate, this is a striping issue. And so we can proceed with the preliminary development plan. And then make that, we have time to continue to evaluate and make that decision either before it goes in or after we have some experience with that. It's a pretty, pretty cheap fix in the long run.
Well said, that's, you said what I meant better than I could have. I don't think it'll probably be something to hold up planning. But it is a concern depending on what the uptake is.
All right, yeah, Hillary?
I just wanted to thank the neighbor for coming and sharing your concerns and please know that we're all listening and, and we've got a ways to go with, with what Laura just laid out in terms of striping. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about the weird mic noise. I don't know if that was me, but I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan for phase two of Mohawk Park at sixty-six forty-nine Lamar.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a preliminary development plan at Mohawk Park Phase Two at sixty-six forty-nine Lamar Avenue, PCC case twenty-three dash twenty-one.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Crane.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Boating House.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Inman.
Hi.
Ryard.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ryard, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on November first and considered seven items. The meeting minutes, contract for twenty-twenty-four legislative advocacy, advocacy services. Twenty-twenty-four employee benefit renewals, CMB application for Prairie Sailor LLC. Revisions to council policy one-thirty, council liaisons to boards and commissions. And resolution ratifying the emergency expenditure for a police vehicle were approved under the consent agenda. The resolution declaring surplus property will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. City Council Policy Number One-One-One defines the process and procedure for the sale of and disposable disposal. My goodness, of real and personal property by the city of Mission, which is also outlined in KSA twelve dash one-zero-one. Property and equipment identified for surplus has been included as Attachment A to the resolution. Each department, in consultation with the deputy city administrator, determines the best method for disposable in accordance with council policy and state law. Items to be declared as surplus include a twenty-twenty-four Explorer that was declared a total loss from an accident. Police Department tasers, taser batteries, taser cartridges, a taser data cable, taser targets and several pieces of computer equipment from the Police Department Court and Administration Offices at City Hall. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution providing for the sale and disposal of surplus equipment for various departments.
Right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Ryard.
Hi.
Crane.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon.
Hi.
Boating House.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Motion case.
All right, thank you. That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you. Perfect. Councilmember Loudon, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
The Community Development Committee also met on November first and considered four items. The meeting minutes, extension of on-call engineering contracts with GBA and Olson and then PCC North Kitchen Hallway Floor Replacement were approved under the consent agenda. The contract award for Waterworks Park's improvements will be considered in the regular agenda this evening. Waterworks Park is a six-point-five acre neighborhood park located at fifty-eight fourteen West Fifty-third Street, which is owned by Water One and maintained by Mission Parks and Recreation through a joint use agreement. The last major improvement on site was the installation of the existing playground features in approximately nineteen ninety-nine. Based on the size of the property and its proximity to Rushton Elementary, stakeholders, neighborhoods, PR team members and city council agreed and plan to complete the entire conceptual design in one project coinciding with Rushton Elementary School's new construction. The goal was to have the park improvements installed when students returned to Rushton Elementary in August of twenty-twenty-four. Project improvements include a shelter and restrooms to support and enhance the current programming. A new ten-foot wide concrete trail connecting the proposed facilities to Rushton Elementary and providing alternative routes along the park. Water fountain, solar lighting along one central route, all abilities playground with poured-in-place rubber surfacing and shade sales. Trash and recycling receptacles, benches, bike racks, native plantings and additional site furnishings. Demolition of the existing parking lot and construction of a new parking lot along Fifty-third Street will increase the number of existing parking spaces and keep the child pickup drop-off further away from traffic. The preliminary development plan was approved by the planning commission at their June twenty-twenty-three meeting and by city council in July of twenty-twenty-three. Based on a review and evaluation of the bid, staff recommends approval of a contract with Centric Construction Group for Waterworks Park Improvement in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Construction is anticipated to begin in January twenty-fourth and will be completed in August twenty-twenty-four. The all-abilities playground pieces, shade sales and poured-in-place rubber surfacing, picnic tables, benches and bike racks will be purchased separately through landscape structures and wishbone site furnishings, saving an estimated forty thousand dollars. Stan Tech completed a final review of the bid documents and is preparing a contract for execution. This project is funded from the twenty-twenty-three Park System Improvements Budget. From the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax identified in the Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan. Mayor, I move the city council approve the contract with Centric Construction Group for Waterworks Park Improvements in amount not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Right, we have a motion in a second. Any council discussion or questions? Yes, Hillary?
Yeah, I apologize. I couldn't be at the committee meetings last week also, otherwise I would have probably shared this there, but I had a, a memory of Mayor Appletoff back in two thousand eighteen at the Shawnee Mission School District Facilities Improvement Open House that was happening at North. And he had shared, you know, we were looking at the new build of, you know, the new site plans for Rushton. And he said, we have to make waterworks happen at the same time. And I was like, that's a great idea. I didn't even think of that. And, you know, so and then that became, became kind of the new tune that we all were humming. And so it's just exciting to see something from so many years ago, which is, I mean, five years is not in city time, that's not that long. So, yeah, good job, Laura. But kudos Penn for making all this happen, especially in the Mexico. I don't even remember when that stakeholder meeting was. It feels like a lifetime ago, but anyways, congrats. This is exciting, guys.
All right, any other council comments? Do we have any public comments online? Our audience? One, do we have any more information about our groundbreaking related to this project? Oh, yeah, sorry. Robin, will you please call roll?
Boating House.
Hi.
Ryard.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Josie.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Crane.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Motion carries.
The short answer is no, we're working on trying to get that.
TBD.
Date TBD.
Got it. All right, thank you.
This concludes my report.
Perfect. And then we do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move on to new business. We do have one very exciting new business item tonight, which is confirmation of the appointment of a new Public Works Director. Director, Laura, will you please share your recommendation?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. I'm only disappointed that the room is not packed with a lot more people to be here to share in this exciting news. As you know, we have been recruiting for our Public Works Director's position since mid-July. I will tell you, it has been somewhat of an unconventional process. But sometimes I will tell you that I think it yields the best results and that's what I'm pleased to stand here to share with you this evening. We didn't have any internal candidates for the Public Works Director's position. And so we were able to involve staff in a lot of the discussion and setting sort of goals and what, what they felt was going to be important to continue the leadership of the department. We really listened to that as we went through the process. I will tell you that we had candidates with technical skills that wouldn't have been the right organizational or, or cultural fit for our department and that was an absolute priority for our Public Works Superintendent Brent, who is on his annual November hunting trip. And could not be here this evening and, and so I know he misses that, but so without further ado, I have shared with the council the resume of Stephanie Boyce, who I am recommending for appointment to our Public Works Director Position for the City of Mission. As I've gotten to know Stephanie over the last couple of months, she's a California girl transplanted to, by her own choice to the Midwest back in twenty-twenty, I believe, right before the pandemic. She and her husband Jack are here with us this evening. But as, as we went through and had an opportunity to get to know Stephanie through the interview and selection process, I think there are some really important things that stood out and resonated with the selection committee and the staff. And that included her work on asset management. I think some of our public work staff were turning cartwheels as we debriefed from the interview process and, and excited and have been chomping at the bit to really get in and help support development of the asset management and really looking at her grant, grant writing experience, just really her sort of cultural transformation, process development. And that, I can tell you, and I, there were many people in the room, but from our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, as we were debriefing from the second interview process, were both very excited about Stephanie's conversations and communications through that process and the tour. And they felt and advocated very strongly that she, that she would be the person that could continue the growth in, in the department. And so they're excited, we're excited. I'm hopeful that Stephanie is excited for that, that opportunity, but she does bring more than sixteen years' worth of public sector experience with us, budget management, CIP planning, as I mentioned, grants management, right of ma, right-of-way acquisition and management, team building, all sorts of things. So under our municipal code, the department director positions, the initial appointment is done with confirmation by the city council. So I would present to you this evening my recommendation to appoint Stephanie Boyce as Mission's Public Works Director for your consideration.
Thank you, Laura. I did just want to make one comment from the interview process to add to great, your great, great information. You know, I got to participate in round one and round two for, on the search for this position. I think what really struck me about Stephanie was a lot of what Laura already said about culture and kind of, you know, in Mission, we like to talk about putting people first and that was definitely, I think, the vision that Stephanie will bring to the department and her work in Mission. You know, both from a staff perspective and a council relations perspective and a community outreach perspective. And then I think, you know, whether, whether we call them challenges or opportunities, we've got a lot going on, especially in Public Works with all of our projects. And I really got the sense from Stephanie that there's no challenge too big. You know, if she doesn't have the answer, she's going to go and find it. And I think that's, you know, really what we need at this time in our organization. So really excited about Stephanie. And I would now entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I recommend confirmation of the appointment of Stephanie Boyce as Public Works Director for the City of Mission.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Welcome.
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, just, I've heard nothing but absolute glowing positive things and very excited to have you. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Oh, yeah.
I said I would come prepared with something small to say, but I am excited for the opportunity to serve not only the community of Mission, but the staff and the council as well. And I look forward to bringing and leveraging my passion for public service, my small city experience. And my desire to improve the quality of life for the residents, the visitors, the business owners. And so thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. I'm happy to join the team and, and continue the culture that's been developed here. And, and I'm just excited to serve.
Great, thank you so much. Right, we did have a motion in a second. Any, any further comments? No, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Davis.
Hi.
Crane.
Hi.
Ryard.
Hi.
Boating House.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Loudon.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, welcome Stephanie to Mission. And we look forward to having you on board, which I will believe will be January eighth.
Correct, yes.
Perfect. Next, we have comments from our city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yes, Debbie?
I have been honored to be appointed by the National League of Cities President to a task force that will be giving recommendations to the next president of the United States on community issues and concerns. It's a limited action task force, so it's only six months in nature. We'll be doing a report out at the Congress of Cities in March. We've had one conference call. They're going to be meeting again in Atlanta at the National League of Cities this weekend, but I'll have to do mine by Zoom. So anyway, it's a wonderful opportunity to represent this city. I think there's thirty elected officials across the country. I'm representing the Midwest. And I ask you if you have any comments or concerns about what you'd like to see in communities, whether it be additional diversity, wellness, the mental health issue, all those things, please send me an email and I will factor that into my conference call recommendations.
Great.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Good stuff. Any other comments from council? Yeah, Ken?
Yes, as some of you know, I have an appointment early tomorrow morning at five thirty for surgery on my ankle. And my doctor has indicated that I may not be available to come and attend the next council meeting. So this may be actually my formal dispedida to you from the council at this time. I may try to get there on the twentieth, but I may not. But I just wanted to express my joy and appreciation for the work that all of you have done and the time that you've had with me. I've really appreciated it, both from council persons as well as the wonderful staff that we have. I just wanted to say thank you. I am leaving you with someone that I dearly love that will be in charge of what I do from here on out. So thank you very much.
And while Ken's trying to escape, we are still going to have him virtually for those, for those December meetings. But yes, Ken, thank you so much for your service, and we'll have to find another time for, for farewell if you can't make it in person.
Yes, we know where you live.
Yeah. Yeah, Ben?
I just can't help but note, and it's probably because I live right behind it, the Mission Bowl Project keeps residents at Rock Creek. I'll, I'll use the new name.
It keeps changing.
Pardon me, that's news to me.
It's on its third iteration of a name.
Fine. The point is, I watch it every day and it's been fun to watch it, but something that I think was especially notable was I've, they started on the back doing the brickwork on the outside of the building, and it really looks fantastic. And I sat there and watched, watched as the, as the brick went up over a couple of weeks in the back and it just was really refreshing how it doesn't look like a lot of these, a lot of the sort of five over one apartments you see going up all over the place that seem like they're, you know, copy and paste jobs across the country. It's really something new and interesting and kind of, I think, brings an interesting flavor and character and looks real good, looks like they cared and looks like they built it to last. So I encourage you, if you haven't, you know, kind of snuck around, I, I sneak around, look and see what's going on all the time anyway, but they're starting in on doing some brickwork on the side of that building, and so you'll be able to go down and take a look soon, and I hope you agree with me.
Great. Yeah, Hillary?
I had no comments planned, but Ken's, Ken's announcement, I have to say something. And Laura, I do hope that we have an opportunity for something a little bit more formal to say goodbye to council member Davis, but I know that I speak for everybody on the council when I share that we are so grateful for your professionalism, your thoughtfulness and the care that you have constantly led this council with, and we're so grateful for everything that you've done for the, for countryside, for Mission, and I know that you'll continue to be involved and, and serve and, and thanks for passing it off not too, not too far off. We're grateful, thank you.
You might still hear updates from time to time, right?
I'm still gonna call you sometime.
Oh, yeah, Leah?
I just wanted to say that I took my dog for a walk at Broadmoor the other day, and the walkway is lovely. It's really, really smooth and beautiful and, and very walkable.
All right. Next, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities, the boards, commissions and committees. First, council members Crane and Thomas for Sustainability Commission.
Attended the Sustainability Commission meeting this month, or it was October. Wanted to let, excuse me, it was November. A couple of things, we had an update from Emily on the energy audit and how that's going, and everybody was really enthused about that, and they kind of want to get their names in the, in the hat to possibly have their houses looked at. We did battery sorting for about an hour. One of the lithium battery places caught on fire, I understand, so they're having to look at alternative measures. I'll get to that when I talk about solid waste, because that kind of goes in concert with this commission. Terry's doing an outstanding job with her batteries and bringing education to the community on several fronts of sustainability. So next I want to jump to the, oh, quickly, we're losing Andy Highland, one of our great sustainability members who's just awesome, right, John?
He's so awesome.
And he's moving to Kansas City with his girlfriend, so he can't be on, but we're going to have him come back as a guest speaker or something. He's got the best radio voice of anybody you've ever heard. I sit on the Solid Waste Commission for Johnson County, and we had several things going on last week at our meeting. But one of which, somebody asked me what else is going on on the sustainability front in Mission. I said, you need to know what this group does and how it accomplishes things above and beyond anything in a square box. I said, do you know that these people, this community and this commission actually weighs in on the developments and what they look like for sustainable practices and best business practices? They weigh in at every level of what's going on. They are considered, you know, an ad hoc group, but really weighs in on the mission of the city and what our goals and objectives are and does a phenomenal job. So they were all asking questions, well, how do we do this? And how do we do this? I said, well, you're welcome to come to a Sustainability Commission meeting because they're open and they love to have people there. We have some great people on that commission and have stayed the route and doing a great job. Also talked about the battery sorting, and so I need to let Terry know, John, that there's another place that's going to be accepting the lithium batteries, so she'll take care of that.
Anyway, that's it. Great. Next, we have council members Loudon and Ryard for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
We have not had a meeting for our last council session, so next meeting is Monday. So sure, but for our more park trail.
Excellent. It's a good one.
It is a good one.
All right, next we'll hear from council member Bowting House on Mission Magazine and the Trail Board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met last Wednesday, and I see Mark in the audience here, so he's part of that group too. We made the announcement that our big change for twenty twenty four is we will be reducing from five issues a year down to four. We think there's a variety of good reasons for that, you know, some of which is it keeps the focus on quality content that residents have really grown to expect. And it also allows for a more stable and sustainable planning schedule that aligns with kind of the natural fiscal quarter that you would expect throughout a year. So it actually seemed like a pretty positive development to me, and I hope that you all agree too. And then we also had our recent issue hit mailboxes just a few days ago, so hopefully everybody saw that. And we actually, believe it or not, are well into twenty twenty four already with themes and story ideas, so I don't want to spoil the fun on that, but I think we will look forward to another solid year of quality and exciting content that really stands out.
Great.
Did I miss anything? You know.
Finally, we have council member Josie with the Family Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The main thing to say for this month is that it's go time for the Family Adoption Committee. We have November distribution on, on the twentieth. Other things of note, you know, we do have Lynn Cring on that, on that committee with us and discuss the, the closing down of smiling hearts and boy, just from the, from the limited time I've been with that committee, it's, it's clear that, that both smiling hearts and Lynn's experience and knowledge and connections are invaluable to, to a lot of the different things that go on, but the Family Adoption Committee is certainly one of them. We've appreciated all that help and insight, and I'm sure we'll continue to get as much of it just from Lynn himself and you know, it's, it's, it's great to be able to work off of those connections with harvesters and have some folks around that know how all that stuff works. It'd be overwhelming, I think, to build something like this from scratch, and it's, it's just invaluable. As for the rest of the committee business, really, the, the punchline is that all systems are more or less go. We're a little bit behind compared to previous years on donations, but we found some ways to make some savings on some food purchases, and so we're steaming, steaming ahead full speed and we'll wrap up the, the year with the December distribution and the gifts, so you'll see the gift tags and opportunities to purchase those gifts in the community center.
Great, thank you, Ben. Yeah, Debbie?
Do we, do you need volunteer? I'm going Monday, but do you need other volunteers Monday?
I think we're set. That's what I have in my notes, but I like to, I like to look at Cheryl to make sure, yeah, I think we're all set. Thank you.
All right, I do not have any appointments tonight, but I did want to make a couple notes under my mayor's report. First was on Sunday was the Millhaven HOA meeting, and they invited both the chief and I to speak. And I just wanted to share that everyone was so excited to have representatives from the city there and so excited to hear about all the things we've got going on, you know. There had to be a couple little digs about a certain development project, but overall everyone seems really happy with the work that we're doing. And I think, you know, the parks pieces in particular and that while we may be slow on the streets, we continue to make forward progress. So I think really appreciative, you know, positive feedback on, on the direction. So it's always good to, to get that reinforcement that we're, you know, doing the right things. And then next, I wanted to share that both Debbie and I will be celebrity guest judges at this weekend's Russian PTA fundraiser, which is at one o'clock at Rock Creek, and there is a chili contest that Debbie will be judging and a pie contest that I will get to judge. So if you're looking for some fun Sunday plans, come out, you can get tickets. Robin can probably tell you how to do that. Let Robin know if you'd like tickets, but should be, should be a fun time.
I want to know who decided who got to do which.
Well, yeah, I'm a vegetarian, so yeah, the chili contest might have been a little, a little tricky.
Hey, I had a chance to make a vegan chili for some friends the other day, and it was one of the better, better ones ever made, so.
Yeah. The mayor forgot to tell you that she won the chili contest at the Millhaven HOA.
With a vegetarian, not vegan, but vegetarian chili.
She's not bragging on herself.
All right, next we'll move into our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have updates to share with us?
I do have just a couple of things. Thank you. And then we'll ask the chief to give kind of an update on some of the FEMA reimbursement things that are happening with the county, and then Robin has a couple of business updates, but just a reminder, because it will be, we'll have Thanksgiving and everybody's brains are going to get jumbled with all of the holidays rushing towards us. Just a couple of reminders, our next meeting will be on the twenty ninth. It will be a work session. We'll be looking at twenty twenty four legislative priorities and continue conversation around the Milhouse development. That will be six PM here at, at City Hall. Our committee meetings switch to the second, each December, we switch to the second Wednesday of the month because of the social event that happens with Johnson and Wyandotte County mayors. So the thirteenth, we will be here for committee meetings, and then on the twentieth, the city council meeting, which will be the transition, the swearing in of the new council. Have a reception ahead of time. And so hopefully I won't have, I already had my appendix out the last time we did this, so I don't know what trick, I don't know what trick I'm going to pull this year, but.
No deadly windstorm this time.
No deadly windstorms or appendicitis. Also, thanks for seniors event. I think many of you are attending tomorrow. December first, we will have our holiday lights and festive sites and the mayor's tree lighting event down on the Mission Market site, and that starts at six. Do we know? I don't. Six o'clock. Then Brian, you helped me. So the November twenty eighth and twenty ninth, we have some workshops on the Bike Ped Plan. I don't, I didn't write down the, the times for that, but we can share that out at the calendar.
So yes, the consultants that are doing the Bike Ped Plan will be in town on the twenty eighth and twenty ninth doing a design workshop, kind of charrette. And on the twenty ninth, you know, the twenty eighth, Tuesday, the twenty eighth, they will be housing, hosting two open house sessions. One is eleven thirty to one, and then the ones at six thirty to eight. So the public is welcome. It's supposed to be kind of a fun, interactive time. They're going to present their ideas they've been working on for the past two days. And then I get some feedback from those that are participating. Then it'll be a lot of just kind of getting out the onion paper and drawing on maps and things like that, so coming up with ideas. So it should be a good time for both those sessions. So eleven thirty in the morning, and then again at six thirty in the evening.
On the twenty eighth?
On the twenty, Tuesday, the twenty.
Tuesday, the twenty. And then the Planning Sustainable Places Rock Creek Corridor project will have a public open house on December seventh as well. We got a sneak peek. Stakeholder group meets tomorrow, but we, as a leadership team, got a sneak peek, and I think you're going to be really excited about some of the ideas and designs that have come out of that. So thanks to Brian and Carrie for shepherding both, kind of both of those through. Robin, do you want to do your business updates and then chiefly you'll finish up with kind of FEMA stuff?
Can I just add one thing? I think we have the Pearl Harbor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Pearl Harbor at eleven thirty on the seventh as well at the community center.
Thank you. My update is fairly brief. Bricks and Minifigs, our Lego resale shop, has officially opened in the Mission Mart, so you should check that out, specifically for holiday gifts. Ben and I were both at the opening, and it was very fun. Azure Credit Union will open at sixty seven fifty one Johnson Drive. Their estimated opening date is March, so you may have seen a lot of work going on over there. They're doing quite their overhaul of that old runs a building. And Cloud House, which is a wellness and yoga space, will open this month at fifty nine twenty nine Woodson in the old Gingerbread House daycare spot. And then our one closing this month is DeBronx Deli has officially now closed at sixty eight forty six Johnson Drive.
Can you, I saw that there was a sign in front of that gas station, what was it, the Amaco or whatever is, and I saw that there was a coming soon. Do you know anything about that?
I don't unfortunately, and I actually just checked with Carrier, city planner, to see if she had any information, and she hasn't sent anything back over to me either, so we're both hoping to find out some more details on that very soon.
And then the tea shop, did that close?
They, they have closed. They closed in the summer. They were hoping that would be temporary, but that did turn into a permanent close.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Sorry. Just curious if there's an update on Big Biscuit or any of the other.
The last big biscuit, we had Big Biscuit and the other place and El Campesino, which is in the Mission Mart as well, where Stroud's was, where they were all hoping to open in November. I think from what I heard on El Campesino, they're waiting for one more inspection in the kitchen, and then they'll be ready to open, so hopefully that'll be fairly quickly. The other two, we haven't had anything new on. Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening. Just real quickly, as you all recall, on July fourteenth, we suffered some pretty significant damage throughout our city with, from straight line winds and, and storms that came through. Following that, there are certain thresholds that have to be met to be eligible for reimbursement through FEMA. And those financial, we did preliminary damage assessments in, in this city and then throughout the county, and then in other areas of state. And through those preliminary damage assessments, we're able to meet the threshold that qualified us for federal relief for, for, for some of our expenses. That process has continued with President Biden signing that declaration that, that kind of formalized that. With this program, to my understanding, FEMA will reimburse us for seventy five percent of our expense, storm-related expenses. Kansas Department of Emergency Management will, will add another ten percent, so we should hope to receive eighty five percent of our storm-related expenses through this process. And you know, this number, there's a lot of, a lot of detail that goes into this, but our preliminary damage assessment numbers totaled one hundred fifty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty nine cents. So if, if all of those expenses hold true, we should anticipate receiving just a lower hundred and thirty two thousand dollars reimbursement for our expenses through that program. So over the next few months, we'll be having some virtual and in-person meetings with representatives from FEMA and Kansas Department of Emergency Management to kind of go through and make sure that all of our, all of our paperwork is in order and all of the damage or the information that we submitted will, will qualify for, for this event. So hopefully, within the next few months, we'll, we'll know a number for sure, and I'll be sure to share that with you.
Very good news. All right, we do not have the need for an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn tonight, I would just share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.